Ben.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Jesse. Ben. It's now seven o'clock. I recognize that we have a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order. First item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do you have any additions or deletions? None? So moving on. Declaration of conflict of interest or pecuniary interest? Counselor Harder, did you want to declare on eight point one? Because it does affect you.
Yes, I'll declare on eight point one.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Nobody. Delegations, presentations, or petitions? I don't believe we have any grant.
At this time, no. We do have representatives from the Legion, but they were here to ask, answer any questions we might have on item eight point four.
Thank you. Public question period. I don't see any public. Item six, adoption of the minutes, six point one, the minutes of November eighth and tenth, twenty twenty-one council meetings. Any questions, corrections? Seeing none. Action items. Any questions on the action items list? Nothing?
I had a couple, Clarence.
Yes, Counselor Booth, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eight and item nine, just wondering if they should be removed. The visitors' building is well underway and the public intoxication portion, I know that you are participating in the homelessness advisory board with housing. I don't know if that's agreeable to everyone, but just wanted to throw it out there.
Any further discussion? Are you all in agreement? If we could remove those two items? Thank you for that. Next item is eight point one, the approval of the amendments, the fees and charges policy. Any questions on this? It's basically a correction to the out-of-town dumping and the quarry fees. There was an error apparently in the original fees and charges on the out-of-town dumping. And that's been corrected. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move along. Eight point two, approval of quarry permit application form.
Mayor Wood. S A O Hood had his hand raised.
I can't see his hand, sorry.
Can we also get everyone to mute? I can hear someone's background music.
Just Mayor Kulikowski, just, just one thing that I would confirm with Counselor Harder, just to make sure that he had declared the interest so that he will, that he confirms that when we get to the point which we were doing.
He did declare a conflict, S A O.
Yes, I know, but now we're at the point that he should say that he's, he's leaving the room or doing something even at this point, even though we're in a Zoom and we don't have his video.
Counselor Harder, are you still there? Guess not. Okay, any discussion on eight point one?
Hey, Clarence, I'm here.
Oh, okay. Do you want to just step up?
Yes, you betcha. I'll declare conflict and leave the room.
Any discussion on eight point one? Seeing none. I don't get you. Can you send Jesse an email or something, Grant? Just to let him know we're moving on?
Yeah, I'm just doing that now.
Okay. Just give him a second to come back here. Counselor Harder? Okay.
Yeah, I'm Doc.
Okay, great. We'll move along then. Eight point two, approval of the quarry permit application form. Any questions? Nothing? Eight point three, approval of the quarry permit form. Counselor, our Deputy Mayor Kulikowski.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work that went into changing what we had previously to kind of this much more digestible version of everything. So kudos to administration for that. Certainly, as someone who looked at it previously, this, this all seems to make the process much simpler and much easier to understand all of the information. So just wanted to say thank you for that and, and for the hard work that I'm sure went into, to rejigging everything to have it a much simpler process. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Yeah, it's a lot easier taking the forms out of the bylaw. That's much easier to do any corrections or anything. Eight point four, request from the Royal Canadian Legion. The request is, sorry, to they're requesting to use up to thirty percent of the funds on account for a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars, eighty, to offset current and future operating costs. And that's from their bingos. Kayla, did you want to comment on this?
Where should you go? Good evening, Mayor Wood. I, I mean, the letter you should have in front of you, it's, yeah, exactly what you said, a request, you know, with the cold weather coming up and the last two years, as, as we're all fully aware, have been very difficult to generate revenue and have been very limited in our fundraising abilities. So, yeah, with the cold temperatures coming up, the operating costs are increasing and we found ourselves in a position where we are, you know, trying, barely being able to cover our operating costs. So, as you mentioned, it's a request for a one-time, if needed, request. This is in preparation for, you know, the cold months coming, for the use of up to thirty percent of our current lottery account balance.
Thank you. Any questions for Kayla? Deputy Mayor Kulikowski?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. And thanks, Kayla, for, for being here tonight. Just, I, I am a Legion member, but not on the exec, so just want to make that clear. But is this basically, if this is allowed, you would like pretty much borrow the money from that account and then when things get better again and the revenue's coming in, you would replace it back into the account? Or is it just a straight-up going to use this portion for that permanently? Or I don't know how to say that correctly, but.
Sorry, I was muted. I cannot recall the discussion at our exec meeting, but as per the letter and if I'm interpreting it correctly, I can get back to you guys with that answer after reaching out to my colleagues on the executive. But it does say, the last sentence in the letter is, this is a temporary request until such time as our regular activities can resume. So I would interpret that as, yeah, when we're back up to normal and are able to, you know, bring in that revenue and the fundraising monies, that we would replace it.
Okay, thank you.
But I can get clarification on that as well.
Yeah, I was going to ask if you could have that clarified by tomorrow, Kayla. Counselor Gallants, you had a question?
Thanks, Chairman Wood. Kayla, were there any other, I guess, any other searches for additional funding to address COVID- nineteen effects on the Legion? So is this kind of the only option you guys have looked at so far when it comes to addressing the issue you raised?
Yes, I don't, we've discussed other options, but as a nonprofit and as part of the, the, the National Legion, a lot of those aren't, we don't qualify for a lot of those. From what I understand, there has been some funds released specifically for Legions and to assist them with COVID. But again, those are released to the national level and then trickle down, and we haven't really heard how, like, where to apply for that from, like, I haven't received any as a secretary, any correspondence on that. But again, I could check in on that. And again, I know we've discussed other options, but from what my recollection, we don't qualify for a lot of them. Or would have to go through, you know, Legion Command.
Counselor Devlin?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Thank you, Kayla, for your presentation. I just, I just had a comment here. I'm just, and I understand this is a one-off, but it is for a considerable amount of money. And as, as one of my hats, I also run a nonprofit where we have some pretty high operations costs in the community. And at one point last year, we were very close to needing to sort of come with a similar type of request to council. That being said, I'm just, I'm very worried about precedent here, about nonprofits raiding their bingo lottery dollars for incidents like this. And I realize this is a one-off with COVID. But sort of further to Counselor Gallant's question on, on seeing if there's other funding sources. I couldn't swing a dead cat without receiving some G W T monies. And I realize Legion isn't, isn't in the same category as, as a youth center, for example, here. But there was quite a bit of money out there to at least support operations on that end. So that's my one concern is, well, I suppose a question to you, to you, Ms. Craig, is do you guys have the executive director in place? I knew that you guys were about to hire one, or you guys have, is there one in place now? Do you guys have a, sorry, yeah. Do you have your Legion manager? Sorry, do you have your Legion manager in place now?
You still have an acting manager. The position is still advertised and it's going to be advertised until filled. Yeah, we've been having difficulties in that front. We're very thankful that we have a very well-experienced person that has been on our staff a long time, who is able to juggle many hats. And she's been helping us. So, yeah, there might have been opportunities that we missed as an organization, but a volunteer committee and not a full-time manager, so.
Do you feel, do you feel if, if, if you guys do get the, the new Legion manager in, one of the directions will be to sort of source others, other areas of funding?
I can see that as a possibility. I mean, hard to speak to when, I mean, it's been posted for almost a year now, and we've had one, yeah.
I understand. I understand the challenges. Absolutely, absolutely. I, I just, I just, I guess I just wanted some clarity. Thank you, Mayor Wood. Thank you, Kayla, for your time. Just wanted to just some clarity on options. And again, sort of just put it out there that I am, the one concern I do have is precedent with other nonprofits. Like I said, I've worn many hats in this community as an executive director of nonprofits. And, and while we've come close, we've never come to this stage, so I'm just a little concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Kayla. I still remember you. I still remember you as a little girl that used to visit our house, so it was your first day.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity, and I will be sure to email Grant with the responses, official responses to the questions. Thanks. Have a great meeting, everyone.
Thank you. Next item is eight point five, discussion of council committee structure. Grant, did you want to take this one?
Not really, but this is, and this is something that needs to be discussed between council. As you know, we have a number of committees as, as we went over in the orientation and that. However, the previous council had made the decision basically to see some of the committees from a regular meeting point of view, just they felt that for different reasons, and a lot of it was, many of the items were then, it's supposed to be duplicated at this meeting. So they felt it was not one of those types, that it was not as productive as, and that. However, this council can decide how they want to proceed with it. Previous council members that were on it and were part of that decision can certainly voice their experiences. We can continue to have the committees, but they could be maybe on an ad hoc basis. So if it's an ad hoc type basis, you still need to assign somebody, you know, members of the committee. But however, it would only be called when, when, when it is felt that it's necessary, and it could be even just a poll of committee members, if something's coming up, do you want to meet? And that, if, if council decides to eliminate committees, then that has an effect on the later items on the agenda. If you decide to cease to have these committees, as if you feel it, they're just, they're not required. Some of them are, as we, I had mentioned, are required under legislation, legislative areas such as the border revision, the Development Appeal Board are the two main ones. Obviously, the lottery committee representative would be one. As that committee meets, does meet, and it is in the bylaw for them to meet twice a year. Other than that, all the other ones are open to. The advisory board, again, is a, is a separate, not committee of council. Therefore, that board itself can decide as to how often they feel that they need to meet, because it is, there's just an appointee to the board. It is not a committee of council, so to speak. The only committees of council would be the administration, public works, bylaw review, and economic development would be the four true committees of council. But I guess it's council's decision as to, do they wish to have, have the committees and with the package were sent out information about each of the committees as well. But I think that's about all I need to say on the matter. I guess it's more council's decision than discussion.
Thanks, Grant. I think we found in most cases, we were just repeating what was already asked in the committee meeting, so it was just a doubling of the work. I was one of the ones that, never mind, I'm not supposed to be leading this discussion. Any comment? Seeing none, we'll move along.
There's comments.
Is there any reason why we couldn't have the committees and then just call them as we need them? I believe Grant referred to that as ad hoc. At least then we know who's going to be called upon.
I think at this point, that was the direction, just to continue at the status quo.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Kulikowski?
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to see people named to the committees and do the ad hoc for now, and maybe just as a suggestion, coming out of our strategic planning sessions in February there, we could kind of look at how we want these to go as well, if that's where the greater conversation happens. But certainly, I, I'm also okay if someone, if there is a newer counselor who thinks that something is very important and we should strike a committee sooner than later. I'm, I'm into that, too. One that I would, I, I thought was quite effective was the bylaw review committee. And so that one, I, I would actually like to see come back as a, as a committee of council. But again, if, if we want to wait until a time when it's, you know, better suited for how we're going to move forward as a council as well, I'm, I'm totally open to that. But happy to hear what other folks have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gallants.
I think some Deputy Mayor Kulikowski's point, we've got some new features on council, some new blood on council. And I think to Counselor Merrill's point, I think it doesn't hurt to have them on an ad hoc basis. I think some of these committees are integral to what we have to do, and as R S A O mentioned, you have to have them in place. So I think it'd be worth our time to canvass our council, see who's interested on, on which committees that they want to sit on, and then have that discussion.
Counselor Devlin?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the same boat as, as Counselor Kulikowski, Counselor Gallants, and Counselor Merrill on, on naming, on the committees and then running them on an ad hoc basis. I, I think committees are, are what you make of them. And you can, you can have a very effective committee, and it depends on the people on it and how they contribute to it as well. So I think with fresh blood on, I think some committees may actually thrive quite a bit. Let's give it a shot, and again, we can discuss it at our strategic priorities meetings coming up. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Devlin. Any other comment?
Oh, yeah, Jesse here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with Counselor Devlin and Counselor Natasha, or Kulikowski, sorry, and all the, all the above. I, I think that we do need to have a hot topic on these and I'm, I'm in full agreeance with it, so I'd like to see us put our names forward to committees.
Thank you, Counselor Harder. Well, I guess the general consensus is that we continue with committees on an ad hoc basis. We'll name people to the committees tonight, and they'll meet as required. Am I correct? Wednesday. Moving on then, eight point six, appointment of members to the admin committee. We need three people. Do I have any volunteers? Counselor Gallants? Need two more.
Mayor Wood, maybe one of the things, since maybe people were waiting on, if I may suggest that some of the members of the council may have been waiting to find out how the discussion went. I would, I would suggest is maybe give them till Wednesday to think about it, now that we've decided. And I fully support having, having all the committees, is that maybe they have time to think about it and they can take a harder look at the terms of reference or all the information that was in the package, and then Wednesday they can, you can do it, and then you can go right into the motion right there. That's just a suggestion.
Thank you. S A O was always, you give good advice. Is everybody in agreement with that? Have, go over the different committees, make a decision, and do a report on Wednesday.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. So that will take care of eight point six, eight point seven, eight point eight, eight point nine, eight point ten. I don't have enough room for all the paper. Eight point eleven, eight point twelve. And now, eight. Item eight point thirteen, council and committee meeting schedule. Has everybody had a chance to look at that? And if they have any comments? Counselor Devlin?
I'm hoping we can meet face to face. I'm wondering where we're at on that.
I'm looking forward to that day, too, Counselor Devlin. I think, actually, I'm going to let S A O Hood respond to that one. He's more into the public health people than I am.
My goal is that we're beginning in the new year, that we'll be meeting in, in person. We just need to get a few things straightened out, including how we're going to livestream the meetings. We, we did the, the one test with the public hearing and one other, and it seemed to work. Now we just have to figure out the logistics inside the, which aren't that hard inside the council chambers and also to, if we do go into council chambers, then there'll be certain rules and procedures depending on what the public health office, what's the current order, if it's changed or whatever. Because under the current order, then the way the seating is and that, everybody would have to wear masks unless they would, I guess, unless they'd be talking. If councils, you know, we can, well, but I'm shooting for the first meeting is in January.
Certainly good news, S A O Hood. I personally, I miss the in-person meetings. There's a lot more, I guess, interaction between the counselors when we have them in person. Zoom's good, but it's not the be-all and all the meetings for sure. Any further questions or concerns? Seeing none.
Sorry, just, this, sorry, going back to the discussion with the committee meetings, obviously, there's dates in there for certain of the committees, but if, if it's decided that's an ad hoc, then obviously, the meeting dates for the public works and administration would probably be taken off and then noted which ones you want as ad hoc committees and which ones have the regular. The bylaw review committee, we've put down as meeting quarterly, which we feel is, gives us a better timing on it, but the other ones would, would definitely then come off and become ad hoc, depending on the decision on, on Wednesday.
You're correct, Council, S A O Hood. Okay, moving on, we actually have one committee we can appoint numbers to. Eight point one four, the appointment of the holiday light-up and decorating contest judges. We need two counselors to volunteer for this. It's we do the holiday light-up and decorating contest every year. And normally, it's two counselors that are on this committee. There's always a lineup. I know Counselor Merrill is always very excited about this. So could I have two volunteers?
Yeah, I'll do it. Counselor Harder.
Hey, Harder, good for you. And the second one?
Hi, what's the date?
Sorry?
The date for the?
I don't think we've given a date for it yet.
I'd like to sit on it, but I'm leaving December sixteenth for a week.
Tenth day of December, looks like.
I'd like to sit on it, Donovan.
Okay, we have our two counselors. We'll confirm that on Wednesday night. Thank you. Eight point one five, appointments to F C M's Partners for Climate Protection Program. We need one counselor. The last one's on this for Counselors Solotky and McBride, who are no longer with us. Brad, do you want to explain what this is about?
This is just an F C M initiative that basically, it, it's, it's very hard, it's very hard to explain, because I'm having even difficulty. It is conjunction with our development officer, Castle Joseph, who is our, our guru when it comes to environmental and climate change initiatives. And so he is, he is also on, on this committee or on this partnership. I don't believe they've had any meetings or anything up until now. It is more a resource base that, however, to be accessed, that you have to have at least one counselor on your representatives to this partnership. And that's really all I have on it, to be perfectly honest.
So it's basically, it's helping the town develop an inventory of projects that is completed and how much they have contributed towards green. And how much they have contributed towards greenhouse gas emissions or reductions. Uh, there is a website listed. Maybe, uh, people could check out the website before Wednesday and give you a better idea of what this is all about. Good enough. Okay, moving on. Eight point one six, the town of Anubik vaccination policy. This one. There's a number of, uh, options here that we develop vaccination policy for employees. For contractors or for people accessing town facilities. This is another one you might read over in depth. And before you make a decision. I checked with Yellowknife, they only have one for town facilities now. There's nothing on employees to date in the N W T. Grant, do you want to add anything to this?
Well, so, uh, oh, it's, I had been also in contact with a couple of the, um, with Fort Smith, Hay River and with Yellowknife. Yellowknife have done their visitor one as everybody's quite aware of all the information that came through in the media. They are holding back regarding, um, the staffing one at this point in time. Uh, just because of a number of other things that's going on on their plate down there. Um, according to the, to the city manager, uh, who I spoke with today, uh, they have, um. Then there is some items about, uh, C P H O. And, uh, and that, that we're also, that they're also looking at, uh, because there is some, some talk about, does, does a. If you put it in for the facility saying visitors to the facility have to be vaccinated, does that mean an employee? You don't need an employee one because for them to go in and as a visit to even work, then they have to follow rules. Although my understanding is potentially from the C P H O, um, that might not be the case. Um, Fort Smith have, um, they do have one, uh, and it is basically a mirror of the G N W T. However, there, as you probably have seen in the media, and that there's still a lot of confusion on the G N W T one as to, uh, testing. How do you, how, who are you gonna test? How many times are you gonna test? Um, there is a program, uh, uh, that we have applied for and have been approved for. Because even if we have one where people are exempt, you'd get a, a, a proper exemption, then you'd be wanting to test them. Uh, where we will be supplied with, um, for now, uh, the G N W T will supply us these specialized tests. Um, how long that would last for free, um, nobody knows. And then there is a certain, uh, procedures you have to follow with it that are very strict as far as training goes, et cetera, et cetera. Hay River are, are, um, again, um. Have a, they have one for their, they have put in for their rec center for the facility. That's pretty well the only building that they have since they don't have a town hall. Um, I believe that, you know, it may or may not do with the firefight, the fire hall that they have. However, they have not come up with one for their employees as well. They're. Not struggling, but looking at it. Um, the other difference that, uh, we have between Anubik versus the other ones is that the other ones are all unionized. However, the unions, the U N W and P S A K have come out in favor of vaccination policies. Of employees should be vaccinated. Uh, there are very few, uh, opposition to it. You, you may have read in Yukon that there is one there, but it's not necessarily the, the, the intent of the policy. It's some of the logistics within the policy that, that the unions objecting to. So that's on the employee side, the facility side. Um, obviously, like I said, Yellowknife has a Fort Smith have a, Hay River put it in already. Um, and that's about where I, well, I have for it right now.
Any questions? Deputy Mayor Kulikowski. Let's do Alana first.
Okay, thank you. Um, I noticed under the ones for the G N W T, there's a bullet on the right hand side that says rules regarding contractors are vague. I don't know S A Hood, if you've seen the recent, um, information that came out around contractors requiring them to be vaccinated. Did you get that information?
No, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, I will try to find it and send it to you.
Thank you.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, uh, Deputy Mayor Kulikowski.
Thank you. Um, I, I guess mine actually tracks along with Alana just mentioned with the contractors. So in the options that are listed here, we have a motion to do for visitors. And then a second possibility of employees and contractors. But I guess my question is, would contractors not be counted under visitors, um, to town facilities?
Until I get clarification maybe from the C P H O because if they're coming in and do work for the town, do they? Then are they an extension of the employees? I don't know. I, I'd have to get clarification from the C P H O on that. Again, we do have clarification though, and if, should, should there be, um, an item where an employee? If council goes with the root of the vaccination policy where employees don't have to be vaccinated and we have a testing regime, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that, that's fine if you have it, that visitors can't enter the, the building, um, unvaccinated. Then that employee, if they're coming in, um, not to work, but as just a member, quote, member of the public. Then they would not be allowed in because of that policy then takes precedent over, because they're not there on, to work for the town. Just to clarify, and I think that's kind of in, in there, but, um, the contractors, uh, they could be considered an extension of the employees. Because they are working in the building type thing. But I can get clarification. I'm not too sure I can get it by Wednesday, but I'll do my best.
So we got, I, okay, are you asking us to, for direction, like? Okay, uh, if we go with option one and we want to ask you to put together a policy for town facilities for visitors. Could we include contractors under that if we're not doing an employee policy at this time, I guess is my question? Because they, it, it sounds like none of the communities are doing an employee policy. They're all working, focusing on their facilities. Which, where do contractors fall into those facilities then? So understanding that the answer right now might not be available, but I guess that's, I'm just trying to suss out how this looks. Um, as a document when it comes back to us later.
Um, if you, we can, we can certainly amend that or, or when we come up with a policy. Because that's what I'm, I'm looking for direction. Instead of bringing four different policies in front of a, sort of what direction you want us to go on it. We, in this case of council says, no, in the facility one, we want contractors included, we add contractors. It's not, you know, I'll, I'll, like I say, I'll see if I can find. Uh, uh, something from it, but, um, it's certainly, I think something was doable.
Councilor Harry.
Hi, I was, um, contractors should be visitors. Cause they do fly in workers from in and out of the territory, right?
That's correct. And I, and, and let's say have an exemption now to get in, I, they would have to be vaccinated. And we, we are putting it in all our contracts that, with people that they will need to be vaccinated.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Devlin.
Um, I'm wondering if we can put a fifth option on there that, uh, is a blanket, covers everything. Uh, covers visitors, employees, contractors. Basically, if we're in our buildings, you need to be vaccinated as one of the five options. Because when you actually look at the options, it's either you can choose one or the other or the other. I want one that covers everything as an option for us to consider. If we could just think about doing that. Thanks.
I guess, yeah, sorry, Council Devlin, that is something we sort of looked at. But the recommendations that we have gotten for, and, and then other discussions with other jurisdictions is, uh, the preference. Is to go with, uh, two different policies only because if the times change or something, depending on what the effect is. And also, um. As, as, as to the effect it has on, on, on the employees because again, you have to be. If you're gonna go all in one, then it would all have to be the same. So obviously that would preclude, preclude the other options of, of town employees not being vaccinated unless. The, the, the policy would be that you could visit the town facility and not be vaccinated, then basically why have a policy? But, um, it, in this case, if you put it all in there, um, I can certainly, and it was also a comment from our legal counsel. Said it would be a- advisable to make it into two separate policies.
I, I understand that. Um, I also, I also think that, that there's a, a few things that are sort of. Fact based that, uh, that, uh, need to be considered in this whole thing as well. Uh, the, the fact that things would suddenly change as far as vaccinations or the effect of vaccines on our bodies is something that's sort of a. An out there thing. Um, and, and again, I, I think part of the, the point is some of us on council. Feel very strongly about this and feel that everyone needs to be vaccinated. And I think that's the point is having that option there for council considers all I'm asking for. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Gallants.
I think for me, the bottom line is, uh, what's the best protection for our, our town staff in the facilities? And also our public. Um, I think my concern is having contractors coming from outside of our territory. From different jurisdictions where they may not have the same vaccination rates that we have here in our region, in our community. So, I, I just don't want to be in a situation where, when I clear on our mandate on our policy. And something happens where we have an outbreak. And the source of that outbreak is at one, was at one of our facilities. Because we weren't clear on protecting, uh, our community. With, with respect to people from outside of, outside of our community who may not have the same, I guess, the same, uh. Uh, eagerness to get vaccinated.
Thank you. Any further questions, concerns?
Uh, Mayor Wood, if I can just address, uh, Council of Gallants, um, yes, I agree with you a hundred percent. Um, any worker that, when they come up, have to do what's called the self-isolation plan. Now, if they're a worker coming in to work in, in the territory, and I'll, I'll use an, an example that we have coming up now is, um. With the pool where there's specialized work. So then those people coming up have to, there's a special, um, self-isolation plan that they have to do. It, um, under the public order, uh, public infrastructure, which this qualifies under, um. They do not have to quarantine or, or isolate, however, they do have to get tested. So therefore, there is that protection, um, that, uh, and that, uh, from our point of view as to that, uh. Uh, and they're not allowed, there are certain things and rules and regulations that they do have to follow. And they have to be approved by the public health office before they're even allowed to come into the territory to work.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, moving on. Nine point one, your bylaws. We have third and final reading. Uh, bylaw to provide for the borrowing of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars during twenty twenty-two. I almost said million. Would have been nice. Anyway, we did first and second reading all, already. Uh, are there any questions? Seeing none. Nine point two, annual borrowing bylaw. Uh, provide for the borrowing of one point five million. We had a discussion on this. It's for second and third reading. Any further questions? Nine point three is the quarry, but proposed new quarry bylaw. Any questions on this? Cleaned up a lot of the language in the old bylaw. The department head reports, oh, sorry, Council Devlin.
Yeah, now, uh, pardon my ignorance, I just, um, as far as the quarry bylaws, is that, is that, uh. Is that just strictly a municipal bylaw or does it tie into any G N W T acts or anything? I just, I just, just understands the background behind that.
Go ahead.
It, it refers to any quarry within the municipal boundaries that the town, um, is responsible for. Or at least from the G N W T, um, for example, out at the airport, just, I don't mean to go on, but just to help you, help clarify for Council Devlin. Is that there's, uh, the G N W T also have a big quarry out there. That has nothing to do with us. You have to go through, it's a G N W T. We had, uh, and I say had, part of that was leased to the town, therefore then it can come under our, our jurisdiction. The only other ones we have is out on Navy Road and on Old Baldy, although Old Baldy is more a very specialized. Uh, material up there that's really not useful except for capping the salt wayside.
Yes, thank you.
Clarence, you're muted.
Thank you. The next item is department head reports. We have none for the set of meetings. Eleven point one, strategic priorities chart or council priorities. Any questions? Seeing none. Council concerns. Any concerns? Moving on. Councilor Gallants.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I guess, and this is, again, maybe, I'm not aware of this, but. Um, I've heard of several story or several incidents of people slipping on our sidewalks, on the sidewalks. Um, I, I'm not too sure if we have a bylaw that addresses that issue of who has to clean the sidewalks. Where, where they fall, whose responsibility it is. But, um. Uh, you know, I, I don't know what the discussion could be about it, um, at some point in time. But I, I know that the sidewalks are getting a little bit treacherous out there. So, uh. Like I said, I know firsthand of people that have actually slipped and injured themselves on, on the sidewalks. So. I don't know if there's anything we can do now or if it's question of timing, maybe something that Rick could, could, kind of help us understand a bit better. Rick Campbell from our public work side.
Uh, just before Rick, Rick says something, maybe I can help clarify a little bit in that. We do have a bylaw regarding sidewalks and the cleaning of it. And depending on where the sidewalk is, if it's in front of a commercial property, um, that commercial property is, is responsible. Um, for maintaining it. I know that the bank quite regularly puts things out in front. Um, we do in front of the library and that, but Rick can maybe add to it. But there is, we, Council Downs, we do have a bylaw regarding the snow removal on sidewalks.
Yeah, I guess I'll just add that, uh, we do most of the sidewalks in the residential zones. Uh, we've been cleaning the streets and the sidewalks. And one of the things that we do is we will be sanding the sidewalks. But since we started our snow removal cycle, it has continued to snow. So we are just waiting for a break in it and it'll be sanded. And, uh, hopefully we have some good weather for a bit. Anything further? Seeing none. The next item, I need a motion to go in camera. Councilor Gallants, Deputy Mayor Kulikowski. Grant, if you'd like to, uh, leave for now. Uh, if he was here, Council Wayneman would also have to leave, but he's not here. So we're officially in camera.
No, we're still recording and live. And I believe we also have to vote to go in camera.
I'll see if I can find Grant and get him to, uh.
Thank you.
Brad? He just remembered.